It's always that learning curve.
Exactly.
Every year you gotta learn.
Now, North Dakota's just wind there, right? If you get really nice weather, you know you're gonna get wind with it. If you get really crappy weather, you're gonna get wind with it.
It's, it's wind.
Yeah, that's the wind.
Yeah, the days when you don't have wind, you're like, this is eerie, something's wrong.
Something don't feel right.
Yeah.
Well, I think I'm as prepared as I can be, so. That coffee was not warm or hot. It's just like, it's like, uh, alarm. Suddenly got quiet. Any other temperatures at people? I thought I seen on my vehicle like forty-eight this morning?
Didn't even look online.
When I arrived here, it was forty-seven. It was forty-nine when I was six years old.
Okay, uh, so I will.
It's somewhere right in that area.
Yeah, unbelievable. I don't even wanna repeat what I thought I heard that they say I could get to today, but it was gonna be, parts of the state could get awfully warm. Okay, we'll call the regular monthly meeting to order. Shannon has roll. Minutes of the November seventeenth meeting? Oh. Uh, the agenda is in front of us. Do I have a motion to approve the ag- agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add two things to the agenda, please.
Okay.
And one would be budget questions. And the second would be tax and financial software. Please.
And number six will be portfolio updates. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as I say amended?
This will move.
Do I have a second?
Second, Ed.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Marvin?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I would aye.
Jean, aye. Okay.
Hold on. I forgot I put the November twenty-third minutes on the agenda.
Yes, I was gonna bring that up. Well, let's go with, do I have a mo- motion to approve the? Yes, do I have a motion to approve the November seventeenth? Mercer County Commission minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Marvin?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
I would aye.
Jean, aye. And not on the agenda, but we need to, um, add it or inject it, or however you wanna call it, but, um, Mercer County Special, uh, Meeting Minutes of November twenty-third. We need to approve those at this meeting.
I, Mr. Chairman, I was there and everything, uh, I have the meeting, or the minutes in front of me here. Um, I'm sure you all do. I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the twenty-third meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Wayne?
I would aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed. Okay. If I'm not out of order, next is remove and approve bills.
Remove?
Review. I guess I was, sorry. Review and approve bills. Came in remon- rating. Got up to a late.
I was waiting for you this second.
I was in business.
Sometimes I think both kinds of calling.
But the minutes are really clear.
Right.
Oh, we got a long reach today.
Yeah.
Nothing against you, I just want a little business.
I know. I did put some, uh.
Some stuff on?
Showered a couple weeks ago. Should be good. Ah, yes, the first of the month, I guess I can do.
Should've showered in your business, I'd free water.
Oh, no kidding?
Jesus.
Just left my mind there.
Geez, that's really busy.
Okay. And once again, if you got a question on any bill, let me know, we'll pull it aside and we'll clear it up. Otherwise, I sign them as I get them. Darren, I kinda like this, that's what I do with God brooms, usually spread out to you.
Geez, I could. You guys wouldn't.
Yeah, we would.
He's done it though.
This one's got a lot of different.
Got a few things in it?
A lot of different things involved.
Yeah. Here we come up and then end off. I'd have to have a bill and ask exactly one of the other ones. So, we talked about how over it is, Jean, do you prefer this over the cold?
Pardon?
Do you prefer the warm over the cold, or do you wish you would prefer the cold?
I prefer cool, 'cause you'd always dress up. But it was awfully warm in here, it'd be cool now, considering.
Because Bill, he thinks that it's disease matter, I mean. They think it's warm out, it's not that way.
Put some plumbing pipe stuff together, I think it's been three days ago, with that pipe group, you know? I got a little bit on the front, you can catch the wear then off of there.
They just don't wanna move, no?
Almost gotta get a water brush.
I'd want to use some unorthodox me- methods to remove glues and adhesives from my hands, but.
Yeah, I didn't make it through. It was cold that day. There were a few guys down there with just caps on, next thing you know, they had their hoods on, then pretty soon they were tied. A few guys heading for the cars. It was way warmer than the day prior to that, 'cause the day prior to that was about thirty degrees colder. Yeah, they called me at, an hour and a half to get, it takes a half hour to get there, so an hour's notice. And I was smoking sausage at the time. So, it was like, wow. Wait a minute. Did a good job, really good job.
Morning, Sherwin.
There we go.
Good morning.
Morning. The office?
No.
Well, we can say it this way, so far it's a good morning.
Did you want me to use it, Liza?
Yep. I thought I had that in my, my bottom.
This is pretty interesting. I'll, I'll touch on a little bit, bring the portfolio stuff.
Okay.
Who's familiar with this? Are you familiar with this kind of stuff? Were they waving to the, the credit card company, waving those to the fees?
I don't think it, I think that's because it's through the bank. 'Cause it's heavily Union Bank on it, huh?
Mm-hmm, Union State Bank?
Yeah.
All right.
So, I think it's because it's through the bank.
That would sink, that's why I asked the third person, so.
Once again, these are all put together, but there's individual.
Can you just go say it back, or?
Okay. Just this one?
Jean, I'm reading that, it says a dollar for a gallon, right? That propane, is that close?
Yes. Are you okay with that?
Well, totally, they're following you a bit. The reason it's in the back of my mind is, is proportional, 'cause we had some propane tanks filled, and I thought it was seventy cents yesterday.
Huh?
I might, I might not have got charged enough. I have to go back and look at my receipt.
I think you looked at your receipt wrong.
I think so.
Because then propane is way more expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Way more.
Considerably more.
If that's seventy cents, I wanna know where you filled it.
I think maybe, maybe a dollar seven B.
Well, I didn't, uh, my wife paid it, and she just says, Marvin, and I said, well, how much was it a gallon? And she said seventy, and I never looked, so.
I will go look. I, it's morning, go. Liza's way closer, I think you didn't hear the buck in front of that.
Yep.
Yeah, that's what was the confusion, not, not that bill. If I didn't recharge enough, I'm gonna go back, tell them. Might've been a mileage. No, it wasn't a propane field, it was two bottles, that's a mileage.
Is it from great things, they're more expensive, it's not like maybe it's like some farming and publishing?
What's the difference?
Great things is a little concerned, it's a lot concerned, but.
More information? What are these all for?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three? The yellow one for fifty? Forty?
I need Shannon to explain this to myself, 'cause I haven't seen that before. Little treasure. Did you get it? Do you understand that treasure as well?
Uh-uh.
Hey, Darren, it's Sherwin. Do you come in and explain your, about your, to my, with your taxes and taxes?
I'm sure, I just wanted to know.
Is it, is that what it is, is it here on home taxes?
I think it's something to do with land.
Oh, no, no, it's your one that comes out of eight oh three three.
Cause her showing.
Your taxes to that one, right?
The one you gave your boys that bought that lot.
Yeah, that one. Thank you, dear.
All right, see.
Darren, you'll come and explain it.
Okay.
All right. It's her department, she'll do a better job. I'd have to wing it.
Yep.
You'll do better than that.
Morning, Darren.
I brought the question up, Darren, I've never seen that before.
Oh, it's been, it's been, every year.
Well.
This is run through, but that's okay.
You?
This is, we call it, we call it the county trust fund.
Okay.
And what happens is, if this money goes in, if, um, a taxpayer wishes to pay on the following, or the next year's taxes, they can pay into this fund. A lot of it is when they buy and sell it, and they determine how much is the buyer's portion, and how much is the seller's portion, and the seller will, um, pay this. So, then, this amount, all these amounts here come out, the statements we are sending out.
Oh, so their statement will actually be less?
Less, yep.
Okay.
And we have some, um, customers now that just pay in advance, pay a hundred dollars a month, or whatever, on twenty-one's taxes, or on the next year's taxes. And then we keep track of it, it goes in this fund, eight oh three three. And then, we get a check from the auditor's office, and we go through all our statements and deduct that amount from that statement.
So, on the backside of it, we're taking money out of that account, writing a check out of that account that Derby's listed on there, out of the county trust fund? We're writing a check out of that fund, and then to her, and she's applying all those taxes?
Yep, it's just a, whatever goes in, comes out.
Mm-hmm, it's just a way of tracking it, pretty much, right?
This tracks it.
And it, it'd just come once a year for us?
It, this comes before you once a year.
Okay.
People send us money, or we work with, you know, the lawyer's office, the banks, they all, you know, when they're selling property, a lot of times, this is how they do it.
Okay.
They send us a certain amount of money for, say, the twenty-twenty taxes, or in the, this case, the twenty-twenty-one taxes. And that amount gets deducted from that statement, parcel number, before we send them out. It's, it's, it's a little work.
So, this is all money you receive throughout the year?
Right, and it's actually gonna be a part of your twenty-twenty-one, or twenty-two budget.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Clear as mud?
It's clear.
Okay.
I get it.
So, yeah, and we keep track of it, um, I mean, that money goes in there, whenever we get it, it goes into that eight oh three three account. We keep track of it during certain, you know, Donald will ask, make sure we balance certain times of the year. And we gotta have it out now, so we can get it on their statements before.
I'd say, because their tax statements are coming out, and we need to make sure we take that amount off of what they actually still owe.
Right.
Gotcha.
Double taxed.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll try to remember next year.
That's okay.
No promises.
For you, it's a one-year thing, for me, it's.
Next year, she'll say, I told you this last year.
Right. We've already discussed this.
Can't you remember anything, or what?
I could ever say it slower next time.
For me, I'm basically moving money from one account to another.
Okay, this one?
Oh, oh, I already signed it.
Has no account number on it. Because it's seventy-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and there's thirty thousand dollars in the general fund budget for it. So, my question is, where are we taking the forty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars out of?
That's where, that was, hopefully, along that line item.
My recommendation would be to take it out of the CD interest fund.
Then?
What is it for again, Shannon?
The audit, that went forty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty.
Oh, my gosh, sure.
Yeah.
Shannon, here's how I look at it. If we, we budgeted thirty-five thousand, we went over, we still put the line item on there, we're over forty thousand dollars. If we wanna take money from the CD, put it into their general fund, transfer that money to cover the shortfall, but at least it's recorded where the actual expense occurred. And when we go back five years from now, and we wanna see, what was our audit for nineteen and twenty? It'll show seventy-five thousand dollars clearly.
I would be fine transferring it in from the CD interest fund, but I don't think that we should shortchange that general fund. Forty thousand dollars, forty-five thousand dollars.
It is what it is, we went over. It's like, most of our, just like, I guess, to me, it's just like buying the road vehicles. We go over the line item, we, we adjust at the end of the year, that's what we make.
But when they went over on their line item for the road department, they are underspending in a different line item, so their balance, their budget's still coming out.
Right. Guess what I wouldn't do, this is my opinion, I would not do it just to make our budget look good. I would record our expenses where they belong, and make an amendment at the end of the year.
I know, I know I won't, you, you won't agree with me, with me either, Shannon, but I think we should, I, I got no problem transferring money, but we should transfer it and show this in the, it'll, it'll show us over budget by that amount of money I have.
Yeah, I think it needs to reflect what actually happened in there.
Okay.
I know you don't like that, but I think that's the way we, we should do it. I, I kept it, I pulled it out.
Yeah, I need to write on the account number on there.
But I guess we have to pay it, but I have, I do have questions on, I didn't even
I haven't seen these for fifteen years.
See that as it came through, that that was that bill.
That's because I got new ones.
You should've put a big red marker on it.
And they're putting it actually up?
That's what it says.
Instead of right next to them, which is easier to grab. If it's up here, then if it's back here, then it's harder to get a hold of, but if it's right above, it's easier to grab.
How does Terry do that?
Okay, that's going to be a different
Well, you can just even just get your
Item that we need to approve.
So, it's just easier to get a hold of it for, when you
Other than, yeah, other than
Yeah, and rather than dragging it over every week.
So, how do we, how do we do this, because?
Yeah, it's trying to get it, and then this is a little bit more dangerous to take it up this way, so if you have it up above.
Technically, we should, we should okay the transfer before we okay the payment, because what if we okay the payment, and we've
Right, yeah.
And the whole fails for the transfer, so we need to
Yeah, it is, it is.
They do, yeah.
Sixty-around flipping.
Need to table this motion
Not mean at all.
To approve. Okay, we haven't, we don't have a, we don't have a motion yet to approve the bill, so, okay. We can, yep. You have that one pulled aside yet?
Shannon, do you know where the maintenance Verizon bill is out of the packet of the chubby one, Verizon?
Because I think that other big Verizon bill is all one, and then
Oh, it's just like the Sheriff's Department or something?
Yeah, David's and Landfill, I think have their own.
Gotcha, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Bless me, things are backwards.
That was Liza, that's good. That's it?
Hi. I'm back. I gotta go off the cuff here, um. We have this bill from the, uh, state office for the audit of seventy-four thousand. And our, um, budget amount was, what, thirty-five? Thirty. So, we're gonna have to move some funds to pay this bill. So, before we can approve the bills, we need to have the money transferred. But at the same time, prior to even doing that, I have questions for our state office before I even pay the bill. So, can we do, approve the bills, and do this money transfer after we go across the review with the state auditor's office?
Well, you can approve all bills and just hold that one out, and then approve that one, because it's at the state auditor's office. Do you wanna do that? Get these ones approved and done, and then?
Well, we can do it that way. Really wouldn't.
Or are you gonna just hold off, I guess, for a moment, but?
Either way, I'd like to hold this audit, state audit bill, until we go across it, so I, I'm open to either how Shannon suggested, that we, um, approve all the other bills, except the audit bill. We can do that, if the rest of the commission so wishes, or we can wait till the end and approve them all.
Chairman, I move that we approve all bills presented this morning, with the exception of the state auditor's bill of seventy-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars upon further information.
I'll second that.
Any further dis- oh, whoa, 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 just a minute. Oh, okay, that'll work, sorry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Marvin?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion approved.
I have a question for Shannon on that too. Well, I think that's taken care of, I think I answered it at home, so, I just remembered it. Part of that bill was quite large, had to do with the water board.
Well, we can cover that when we go.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, 'cause I have questions also. Um, do we have to wait till exactly nine-thirty on the award of bidding? Recorder, other business recorder fees of six thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Wayne?
How about I?
Liza?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion carried. Set polling places for... Okay, number three, duplicate check, number fifty-three, nine, oh, I got questions on that one. For seventy-seven dollars and forty-five cents.
This is a duplicate check. I request for duplicate board from the treasurer's office for a refund of overpaid taxes in the amount of seventy-seven forty-five.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
How about I?
Marvin?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion carried. That's like three times I remember to say that. Polling places, precincts for twenty... Okay.
Who made that motion for the duplicate board?
Liza?
Liza.
And Wayne?
Wayne seconded it. And all said aye. There were no nays.
Got it.
Okay.
Oh, I need you to sign this. Thank you. Thank you.
In a minute and a half, can we go across the polling places? Set polling places, precincts for twenty-twenty-two.
Uh, the last election, we held vote by mail, um, early voting and one polling place in Hazen at the city hall. Uh, several years ago, I believe it was in twenty-eighteen, the board had made the change to do one polling place, um, and rotate between the cities of Beulah and Hazen. So my recommendation to the board this year would be to stick with vote by mail, um, early voting, which happens one week higher right here in the courthouse. We had a fabulous turnout with that last year, and then a polling place on election day for the Beulah Civic Center. And as far as precincts go, um, according to the redistricting that the legislative, um, set, that happened at the legislative session, our districts have stayed the same. The only change is District Four is now four A. So we don't, we didn't need redistricting or none of that.
It's just classified as, under a different name?
Yep, um, so I just need a motion to set the polling places and then also to approve the precincts as, to continue precincts as they are, they're already set.
Do those need to be separate ones, or can they be all?
You can do it all in one.
Okay.
However, you guys want to...
Do I have such a motion?
Do I need to say it aloud, or can I just say so moved?
You can say so moved.
Should, should I read it back?
To set polling places for twenty-twenty-two elections, as vote by mail, early voting at the courthouse and in the Beulah Civic Center, also keep all precincts as previously established.
Sounds good.
Liza, so moved?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and fellow board members, um, I'm in favor with this, but I have some questions. Last year, as I recall, there was a pretty long line at the Hazen Civic Center. There was a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot of, but there were a lot, there were some complaints that it took too long to get in there. If we have inclement weather, we may encounter that again, so do we, is it better to have two versus one for voter convenience?
How much money is, does that add to it though?
Well, that's a whole another election board, so that's five people working. And then you have to have enough, since we're vote centers, you have to have enough ballots for every precinct at both vote centers. Um, and the, and the other part of that is, is it was a huge presidential election in twenty-twenty, so I would think to say that was the reason that everybody was out voting. It was a huge presidential election.
This is an off-year...
Right, and this is not that same.
Our midterm elections normally don't, don't get that big.
And, and the Civic Center in Beulah has quite a bit of space where people, if you line it up right, they can do the...
Yeah, I would agree with trying it with just one, one place, just because of the impact of having two places. And then we'll know next time, whether it's a general election or a national election.
Yep.
So, okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Liza?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Wayne?
How about I?
Jean, aye. Motion passed.
Wayne seconded that.
You said, you did.
Good, good. Now we both...
I got M here.
Yep, you do.
And it doesn't mean that I wrote the wrong name down before, but...
Well, you did good, you did good.
Okay, now, Sherman.
Sherwin.
Sherwin. Well, sorry. You've been called worse, I bet.
That'll help.
Yeah, helps though. Visually challenged here.
Thank you. I'm not sure it'll help my comprehension, but it looks better. So it's just itemized basically?
Daniel.
And the man.
You got the floor.
Thank you, commissioners. As you recall, on the seventeenth of November, we opened bids for the landfill cell six and cell seven clay lining project. The project was bid with two, with two bids, one a base bid and then an alternative bid that expanded the project to include both cell six and seven. Three bidders bid on both of the bids. I went through the, well, the attorney went through the bid bonds and the licensure to make those were okay. And then I went through the bids to review the qualifications and projects and check the, the itemized numbers. All three bidders were qualified. And the bid amounts did check out with the unit prices, so the, so there were three good bidders for all the phases. On the analysis of the bids, uh, for the base bid, which is just the cell six clay lining project, uh, Veronka Brothers out of Dickens North Dakota was the apparent low bidder. They were about seven percent higher than the engineer estimate. There's no issues with the bid, uh, so that, so that would be a good bid, and that, that would be the low bid on the smaller cell six project, which was the base bid. The alternate bid results, Northern Improvement was the apparent low bidder, or was the low bidder for the combined project, which was the alternate bid. At a hundred and sixty-nine, hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents. And that was actually less than the engineer estimate for the combined project. And then we did ask for separate unit prices in the event that, um, if the, so drought year, then we had, ended up going offsite to get water. Hopefully, springtime, we don't have to do that, but I did ask for some alternative unit prices on that, so that, um, that wasn't anticipated in their base bids. I'll have to account for that. You know, in terms of my recommendation, you know, from the engineering perspective, I believe that the alternative bid results with the low bid of hundred and sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents to Northern Improvement is the best bid in terms of, um, you know, project costs and the amount of work that, that would get done. Northern Improvement did account for the fact that, you know, once the equipment is mobilized to the site, adding the additional earthwork yardage is, is more efficient than, than, you know, mobilizing twice for projects. That's where the, the big savings came in, that Northern Improvement was a little bit on that. I guess, any questions in terms of the bids? In terms of the unit prices or, or anything on the, the bids themselves?
Give me a second, please. I'm just gonna pick one, just for clarification, yeah? Okay. Look at line seven. And I'll be looking underneath Northern Improvement, way over where it says alternate cell six and seven, unit price. There's a unit price of seven-ten, and it gives a total of a hundred. What units are we measuring there?
On the, for that line seven, uh, if you go over to the left, it's a cubic yard basis.
Okay. I see. I got you. That explains it. That's what I was looking for. What's LS?
Lumsum.
Lumsum, okay. Did, anything taken into consideration for possible water usage on these numbers?
Well, the, on line five...
Okay.
Is the, it's for the water usage.
Okay.
But that's the unit price for the water that's obtained from the stormwater ponds, so that's primary.
Is, okay, is MG a thousand gallons or a million gallons?
It's a thousand gallons.
Okay, I thought so, but I wasn't sure. All right, that was all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, now we gotta talk the dollars though.
Yeah, I think the, from my perspective, I mean, the decision is to whether award the base bid project, but those unit prices were a little bit higher than the combined bid. So I think the decision is whether to award the, the base bid or the alternative bid. And we have one contractor on the base bid and one contractor on the alternative bid, so...
And the question has come up, and I need to, this needs to be covered, is financially, do we have, um, my understanding is, we have the one-twenty-three, two-sixty-nine, seventy-eight. If we do just sell six, but where are we if we have, would accept the one-sixty-eight, seven-forty-seven, forty? Do we have enough money?
Mr. Chairman, I have to ask you the same question, well, I need to ask you a question. Where are we saying that we have enough money for the one-twenty-three, two-sixty-nine? Where is that money coming from? Well, that's not from you, that's from our board.
Um, currently in the landfill operational fund, we have a hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Oops.
The projected thirty thousand would be transferred in by year end.
How much did you say was in there?
Hundred and sixty-six thousand. But in discussions with Sherwin, um, during this process, we had done, um, when we did our, the financial assurance together back in August, we had gone through all of Candy's numbers, and at that time, that's when we discussed raising your, um, your rates, so we can start... Your funds weren't getting filled up all these years that they should have been. And, and even the last, quite a few, we've been putting thirty thousand in every year, but we have projects coming up. So in our discussion back in August, Sherwin, in my notes, I had written down that the max for the cell six and seven lining placement we'd want to spend is a hundred and thirty-one thousand to maintain our funding regulations. And with that, we have the SRF funding that we could use the other thirty, you know, we could use thirty-eight thousand of that.
From the SRF funding?
The SRF funding.
Which was included in that letter that Travis sent us to look at, right, or that email?
Yes, and that's why we redid some of the bidding documents so that that was included for this project, I believe.
I didn't write down fast enough. The max we wanted to spend is, out of that fund is a hundred and thirty-one?
Yes.
Hundred and thirty-one even?
Hundred and thirty-one thousand even, yeah.
And, um...
The reason you gave that's numbers, because then we would maintain the minimum required in that fund?
Yes.
And, and be able to do future projects where we have to cap things as well, right?
Yes, yep, because, um, Sherwin has kind of made together like a twenty-year plan of everything that we need to do in the future out there. And some years are nothing, but some years are expensive, so we need our years in between to build those ponds back up. And that's with her maintaining the thirty thousand, um, transferring in every year still.
So we're looking at using a hundred and thirty-one thousand out of the operational fund and borrowing, possibly borrowing up to thirty-seven thousand out of the SRF?
Correct.
And that's at two percent, I believe, right?
Correct, or it was anyway.
They adjust quarterly, but I believe the, the latest was two percent.
Is that a floating rate then, or is it locked in once we borrow the money?
It's, it's, I believe, it's locked in once you borrow the money.
But it doesn't start accumulating until we actually choose to borrow the money.
Correct.
It's like a building loan, construction.
And being, I'm novice to this, there will, we would not have a problem getting that SRF money?
That's why we had the bids done a certain way so that we could qualify for it, right?
All the, all the bidding documents included the required language for SRF funding. Now, the county would still have to proceed with the process and the application for the clean water SRF funding.
I do have a question for you, though. Um, when we sat down in August and went through all of these projected costs for twenty years, and we had decided how much we needed each fund going forward, um, at that time, your projected amount for the cell six and seven clay lining placement was two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand two hundred.
And that did include the, you know, testing and engineering fees.
Okay.
So you said of that too.
Okay.
But, you know, my engineer estimate just for the construction was a little bit higher than the...
Okay.
Than the bid that was received.
So do we know what your engineering fees are gonna be on that, because I think we probably should have a total picture.
Have to go back and look, but I want to say that my engineering fees were estimated around twenty-nine thousand.
So you, so it's not thirty-seven, it's probably forty-six?
So the total, either on either the, um...
Fifty-six.
Base price and or the, um, alternate price, we can add approximately thirty thousand on from the engineering fees. Yes, for a total bill?
Total project.
For a total project, okay.
So essentially, we'd have to borrow about sixty, right?
Sixty-seven.
So, in...
And engineering fees must, I mean, don't change based on if it's one cell or two?
No, those, what does adjust would be the, just the testing fees, so we'd be pulling more compaction tests with the larger project.
So are we gonna get closer to that, to twenty-one?
Yeah, well, I'm thinking we're right at one ninety-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd be close to that, two-hundred thousand.
Okay. Um, Liza? Okay. Um, Liza, um, I know you used the word "we would borrow." Is this, uh, the county or the landfill would be borrowing?
Well, the landfill, essentially.
I'd say it'd be the landfill.
Landfill doesn't run on county dollars, and you know, they're a-
It's self-efficient.
That's why I'm, I, I'm not picking on you, I'm just saying, for clarification. I've always been told that they're a separate entity, but still fall under the county, so to speak. So if, um, the county were not, if the landfill were not able to meet their financial obligation, would that obligation then fall on the county?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I see the landfill budget?
Absolutely.
I wanted to just check to see what you had in there for project costs for twenty-two.
Not very much.
Well, I know, and we look at the numbers, it would make sense to do the al- alternate bid.
Well, it's something.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, it's a, it's a number we chose, so it's what it is.
I'm just trying to get my real scope in the right direction here.
But, um-
And does, and when you guys projected, did that include Candy raising her rates for your projections for everything, right?
Are, are rates high enough? I know Candy objects to them going, I think we should be charging more, but-
I do, too.
That's-
No, well, we, we will be January first.
Right, but I don't-
And also, I guess I didn't come to you guys, I raised the white ware with free on it, twenty bucks, because the city of Beulah dumped all of theirs on me.
Great. With free on it.
What was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
With free on white ware.
What was it?
Because it cost money to suck the free on it.
I know, but what, what did you pay, what were they?
They were charging twenty bucks, and then I was only at seventeen, I raised mine at twenty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it was fifteen hundred dollars to suck them out.
Yeah.
I see that, yeah.
It's a difference, you know. Thank you, thank you, Ray.
Anything you can raise without our consent, I would suggest you, 'cause I think you're running pretty lean out there, myself.
So my suggestion is this, that it does not seem, if, if, we probably should do both. Because it's forty-seven thousand more to do the second cell, but it's a hundred and twenty-three. So if you did them separately, plus thirty thousand in engineering, you're gonna be spending roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a cell, which is three hundred thousand dollars, or you're gonna be spending a hundred and ninety-eight thousand to get them both done, and maybe borrowing fifty, sixty thousand. She does have twenty-five thousand dollars in her payment to contractor line, which is the line that we paid Sherwin out of. So that does help, which I would still suggest borrowing the full amount over the one thirty to pay for the project. And then if she can pay more, I don't think there's anything against paying in advance or anything on this either, this SRF fund, if she have extra, she could always, she had extra in her payment to contractor line, she could always use that to go towards a loan. I just feel like we're saving a hundred thousand dollars. And how long, I can get an honest guesstimate, how long would you say that cell seven would need to be done anyway? If we don't have much time to save that extra hundred and fifty thousand?
Generally, we set up the, the cells with around a five to seven-year life.
Okay. So, so you would project that we have five years before we have to do cell seven?
You would be-
Five to seven.
You would have to be constructing within five years.
Within five?
Yeah.
So if we do both cells, we're good for about ten years? And-
And we could take out the SRF loan for ten years? I mean, I think it goes up to-
I believe it's a twen- it would be up to twenty years, I believe, as well as SRFs.
So, I don't know, it's, my suggestion is, it just doesn't seem right.
How soon would we know if we qualify and/or can get the SRF funding?
I, I mean, the communication with the, you know, our SRF program's already started. I guess I can't, I can't necessarily give you a direct answer.
Well, here's the, as I see the conundrum is, if we okay the alternative, and we're looking at two hundred thousand, I, I, the way, the way I, I've lived my life is, I wanna make sure I have the money before I spend the money. So okaying the alternative bid and not having the money assured kinda bothers me, because now, what will we do? We'll be telling the contractor that they won the bid, but then come, what, March, April, May, June, or how soon, that's why I'm asking, how soon do we apply for this SRF money, and we don't get it for a couple months? And if we wouldn't get it, then what's our alternative? Wha- what are we gonna do with the balance of what we already awarded the bid at? What would we be obligated to? Can we back out of our, out of our bid? Tell the contractor at that point, you know?
Mr. Chairman, you still paid the- I, I agree with what Shannon said, that it just is most practical, if we can swing it, that we do both cells. We're basically getting half of the cell free.
Yeah.
And then I also agree with Gene, and I'll tell you, where I'm at, I can't approve this unless I know we have the SRF funding.
I wish Travis was here, because his email makes it sound like they're guaranteed.
And that's gonna be my question, do we have to-
Guaranteed when it's in our, in writing.
Do we have to approve this and have it approved to apply for the SRF funding?
We can approve it contingent on approval of SRF funding.
While the-
But then what's our contractor's gonna say?
That way the-
I don't hope your contractors do that.
Well, we wouldn't hire a contractor. When do you have to start hiring a contractor?
Well, if you award this, you're already hiring.
You're already hiring, right?
As soon as we award it.
Well, when, when do work start?
Soon as again.
Oh, yet this year?
Uh, no, no, in the spring.
That's what I mean, it's, we're looking at six months, five, five months. So can't we get the SRF approval prior to that?
Can I, can I maybe back up a, a little bit?
Go ahead.
In terms of the procedure, the cut, the, the bidding documents for this project does have a sixty-day.
Right.
So from the time you open bids, you have, county has sixty days to-
Thank you, that was gonna be a question of mine.
To hold the bids.
Hold the bids, yeah.
Before award. So that-
When did we op-
That's part of the bidding document, so the contractors need to hold their bid prices for sixty days.
November seventeenth.
November seventeenth, so we have sixty days from November seventeenth that their bids are-
Valid.
Okay, valid.
Not, that's a-
I, I don't wanna wait the entire amount of time, but that would move us up to- middle of January. I would, I myself would kinda like, I, I know we wanna get this done, but I would like to wait at least till the next meeting and get a, I'd like to have someone be able to tell me how the SRF funding's gonna work, if we can, may, maybe I'm way off course here, but I sure would like to know that, how, how it's gonna work, if we have to approve this and then apply for it, or if we can get some assurances, and then, and even if we have to appro- approve it and apply for it, but get some assurances that, once we approve it, it's gonna, it shouldn't be a big problem getting it. I can understand no guarantees, but at least a little more.
So why couldn't we approve it contingent on getting approval from SRF for funding? Isn't that the same thing you just said? We would be, if, if the SRF wants the county's approval of the project before they're willing to consider giving us the balance, we would have to approve it today, but we could approve it contingent on their acceptance.
I won't, I can't disagree with what you're saying. Now, now you're getting almost to a legal perspective in which I can't answer.
My, my only concern with that would be, is what's actually considered approval from SRF? Because if they can't approve us within that sixty days, then our bids are no good anymore, so then it would no longer be able to work through that. So my concern about that is, if we say something like that, is what if we can't get our SRF within that time or get a notification of that? Now we're done, now our bids are null and void.
But they would, we can't afford it regardless if we don't have the SRF.
No, no, but, but what she's saying is-
But maybe we should just table it until next-
Right, what she's saying-
Where we can find out a little bit more about the SRF program.
I was worried about losing two weeks, but I agree with you.
Okay, so you're, I, I get where she's coming from.
Hmm, yep.
Because your motion would be upon approval, while that might take two months.
Yeah, I didn't wanna lose the two weeks, but if that's where we wanna go, I can understand that.
Because it, it may not be that we could get approved by SRF within that timeline, so then, or it's no longer, it can't be contingent on it anymore, so then we lose our bids.
Well, I think the consensus of the commission is that we table this, and we get some, uh, a response on our SRF money.
Yeah, get some clarification on that.
We should have a-
Yes, Candy, well, I'll let you talk.
I do have a question on this deal, okay? Back in the past, before I was a supervisor or whatever, when there was equipment purchased or whatever back then, the money was actually borrowed from the general fund and paid back. It's on my thing.
Right.
Which I haven't done that since I started. So perhaps, say, if something fell through on that loan, what, what is the reason why, 'cause you said I do technically have the money, just don't wanna deplete my account, right? Why couldn't I borrow it, like, say, whatever little, whatever amount, so I don't completely deplete the funds, which I, that's already there, to borrow it from them, pay the general fund back the two percent interest? And so either way, if that fell through, then why couldn't it be on that?
That's plan, plan B.
And the money would still come back.
Right, and, and in the past, too, that's true. She's purchased a loader, borrowed money from the general fund, paid it back within a year at two percent interest.
Right.
Okay, but then wouldn't we have to have the fifty-one thousand, or fifty-six thousand in, in our budget on the general fund as an expense for next year?
Or you amend it, as you spend it?
It's a good point, Candy.
General fund to pay for anything.
I'm gonna say at this, at this point, we can consider that, but I want an answer on the SRF, uh, SRF. And then, we, we might not have to pursue that, Candy, is what I'm getting at. Uh, uh, my understanding is, we're gonna be able to get this SRF money, and then-
And just so we don't end up losing the bids and have to go to the future again, because it costs money.
No, no.
To do this, too.
Yep, no, no, we won't.
That's what makes me nervous.
Yep, we got sixty days, this has been fourteen days. So we, we got, we got at least till the seventeenth and even till January.
And not the-
I'm gonna say six, I'm gonna look up there, but it won't be the six. One, see, like, the third or the fourth.
One thing.
Okay.
So, we, we have a little bit of time. Yes, Wayne?
If worse came to worse, uh, we do have a base bid, and I think that if, if absolutely everything went south sideways, we would try to definitely stick with that base bid and get that project part of it done.
Yes, thank you, Wayne, yes.
But that's if everything went sideways.
Yes.
Wait, we still wanna do the alternate one?
Today, we would like to continue to just what you're saying.
We just wanna make sure the funding is in the right.
Thank you for clarifying that, Wayne, yes.
So we don't lose everything.
Yeah, and not to lose perspective here, thank you.
Well, you're welcome.
Okay, can we, I think that's a consensus of the rest of the commission, that we just wait-
I think we should have a motion on that, to table these bids until, table approval until-
Table the word until the next meeting?
Yes.
December fifteenth?
Fifteenth, that's on record that we- At the Beulah, Beulah historical.
Oh, yeah, that's right, we'll be at the, yeah, don't drive all the way over here.
I better mention that today, so.
Okay, is that okay?
Um, that's fine, I guess, just so I'm clarified, you know, I'll engage in communication with the state SRF program, but I, I can only take those conversations so far, so I'm gonna have to direct them to probably Shawna.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
For what else we need to do to continue it, correct?
More information than I'll be able to give.
And if, you know, you, 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 I know you don't have the authorization, so you can't guarantee, but you can, um, definitely impress upon them that we, we would like to go this direction. It's the feeling I've got here, that we'd like to go with the alter- alternate bid, so that we would need that money. But we'll wait and see what, what they tell us we need to do. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so then, I have a motion-
Mr. Chairman, I-
To table this, uh, bids for cell six, six and seven at the landfill until the December-
Fifteenth meeting.
Fifteenth meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I move to table bids for cell six and seven and our landfill until December fifteenth.
I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Marvin?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Gene, aye, motion carried. Sorry.
Thank you, Sherwin.
Thank you very much. Sherwin and Candy. Okay, we're all the way up to ten o'clock. Probably scared him off. Is there a way you can find out if he's on his way? Or does he think we're on mountain time?
I don't have his cell number.
I do.
You have everybody's cell number.
Uh, let's recess for fifteen. We'll recess for fifteen minutes.
Hey.
Good morning, Sher, they're calling you.
How are you, Mike?
Hey, good, Mike.
Well, I was, I was out here, I was talking to, um, Alice and Darby, and, well, it's not in recess yet, so I was just waiting. I didn't know you guys were recessed, otherwise I would've-
Well, no, we were, we looked for you, and Gene says, "Well, I'm not gonna call him while we're in session. We'll take a fifty-minute recess," and then, so, he's trying to call you now.
I just ran into him in the hallway.
You got ten minutes, sir.
How've you been?
Good, good. Life is good.
Yeah, it's a beautiful morning out there, other than-
Boy, did you have a good day for a drive, huh?
Yes, it can be very ugly this time of year, so.
Yeah, good for you, yeah, glad you had a good day. Good, which way did you come up, Washburn Way?
I came up, I went north to the truck stop, on, uh, so going over on ninety-four-
Okay.
Through center.
Okay, if you, if you haven't been up this way very often, if you take, uh, two-hundred and go all the way east to Washburn, and then go south on eighty-five to Bismarck, it's a little more scenic.
So once you get on two-hundred, you can follow that all over eighty-three, then?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do that.
It's a little more scenic, you're on the river road.
Okay.
Our, our river road.
Yeah, no, well, I already thought, just coming up, or the direction I did was beautiful.
A lot of people give us that, and I agree.
Just the rolling prairie and all the energy activity and-
Well, there's lots, huh?
Yeah, you guys got a big task. All, all the stuff going on, there's no doubt, so. Hi, are you Wayne?
Yeah.
Hi, Wayne, I'm Mike Schnike from the office. Nice to meet you. How are you today? Doing your thing, right?
Yeah. That's one, uh, worry.
That's what I've been told.
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah, we're having a late start to winter, I think we'll take it.
Yeah.
It's-
Indeed, here it is, this week we'll take it.
I did see on the news last night, though, they said that there's a contract there. What's that?
No.
Yeah, well, it looks known, and they were talking, and this was a lot, really cold, they were bottled up, up and on, yeah.
It was Cindy.
Yeah, sounds like at some point, she signed it. So we should enjoy the-
She was right in the back, he was in the front, he was a big guy.
The whole timer's climbing, mobiles, I mean, they started dating, you know, but there are some enormous models.
Preparing for something, huh? Okay. Well, this, you know, after last winter.
Much time is up in her fifteen minutes.
It was ten oh two.
All right, sign it up here. Yep, that's right.
We can prove it.
Have me on camera too, don't you? I don't think I can hide it all. I've I've watched a few of your commission meetings.
I don't even know, Mark is adding what's going on, are you gonna say?
I hope they're good ones.
We've got a good watch.
A couple of them, just um I tried. When we were um, when we were doing some work on the landfill, you know, there were some different discussions with Sherwin, and I think he was here this morning.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Well, probably not as cool, right?
Yep. Yeah, we're working on that disclosure, wanted to make sure we had things right and um, and we actually met with Sherwin on a, on a separate meeting one time too, just to make sure we understood what was happening out there. Did you guys figure out some bids then for six and seven?
Well, sadly, we, we tabled it for now.
Okay.
We want some questions, we had some questions.
Sure.
We're gonna see if we can get some answers.
Okay.
We're hoping to get some.
Yep.
We don't know if the answers will muddy it up more or if it'll clear it up a little. We're hoping they'll clear up some.
Yeah, well, you guys are are definitely unique, um with the clients that we have, we don't have any counties that have landfills. So you guys are definitely one of the few counties that has a landfill. We see a lot of cities, a lot of cities have landfills, but counties not so much, so. Yeah, there's a lot of water. Yeah, there's a lot going on out there, yeah, it's. But you you don't have any, so there's no other service like that.
Cause I know like more.
If they don't, if they're not there then.
Or they'll send the money to somebody else.
I was gonna say, are they city ones maybe? Cause I just remember, like when I was talking about the win.
Pretty well.
I thought they said more. But maybe they meant man, you know, you know.
And it's a small.
What I was hearing it over the radio and stuff.
It's a small landfill, I mean, we don't accept so much tons of people. But the, the primary reason was is so we could control our trucking tip, giving fees and our cost of our coverage, you know, to the community.
Cause you've got to truck it a long ways away, it's gonna be way more expensive.
Oh, and you're on their, you're on their ticket, I mean, they say, well, we're on fifty bucks, it's fifty bucks.
Yep.
And we couldn't, we couldn't truck it way to mine it.
We are. I feel we are very low on our rates. We did raise. I hate raising them again in this short amount of time, but I think we're gonna be looking at that, you know, pretty quick going up a little more. And I think that would still almost make us the lowest.
Well, with the period of time that we're in, everything is expensive. If you need a tire for the loader, I mean, it just, it's it's rough right now. We we farm down in Evans County and we can't buy fertilizer, we can't, I don't know what next spring is gonna entail, summer fella or, I don't know.
He's gonna put in a lot of radishes and cover crops.
Maybe, I maybe, I don't know, I don't.
Winter, oh, triticale or something like that, yeah.
Beret and stuff, sure, yep.
They'd make good pancakes out of that.
I can't do surgery this morning.
We uh had a little discussion yesterday with the forms and stuff, and part of our discussion was SRF funding, so I'd like to get a little information, but that might help us there too.
Hey, this meeting's not back in session yet, so I just have a question there.
Okay.
I hear some stuff about this tax, potted with thirty thousand, forty five, seventy five thousand.
Hey Sean? What are you doing? I was just waiting.
Yeah, that's right.
And then Jean, guys, we're looking for you. I thought you guys were still handling it out here. That's, you know, it's nice to be here. I was over there talking.
Would you please sign your book?
Yeah. That level construction isn't fine, that's. Okay. Nice, nice. Yeah, no, this is good, this will get this closed out.
Alright, thank you.
Just give me. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's next on the agenda.
Yeah, they go up closer to the dam where the water's fresh.
Well, everyone's back, so we.
Treasurers wanted to be here, they know that we were on break.
Okay, go ahead, oh she. I waved, I think she's seen me. Okay, we can reconvene. Uh the next item on the agenda is our state, well, not our state, our county audit, which the state auditor's office done, did.
Done, did?
Did, yeah, I have that correct. Um we have some questions, I have some questions, I'll, I don't know if other commissioners do, but I have a couple of questions to ask. But uh right off the top, uh Mike, um do you have anything you wanna present to us or gotta, okay, go ahead with, you go first.
All right, Mike, for the record, would you please give your name so people watching the video know?
Yes, my name is Mike Schmitke, I'm with the state auditor's office, I work in the political subdivision of that agency. I brought, I brought some business cards, I'm just gonna hand it over here to Jean, and then you guys can take them. Um we tell this to all of our clients, but if you have questions at any point, it doesn't have to be during the audit, you can always call us and ask questions.
Okay, thank you.
What I would like to do this morning, I guess, is just go over the audit report, um what we had in the audit report, and then answer any questions that you may have in regards to what I go over. Uh the first thing I guess I wanna say is, you know, thank you to the commission for inviting us up here to present this report, um I feel honored to do so. And I would also like to thank Shanna and her staff, and Darby and her staff for all their help during this audit. Um if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have made it through. We asked a lot of questions, um a lot of details, and uh they were very courteous and responsive to getting that back to us, so we we do appreciate that. Do you all have a copy of the report in front of you?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. So the first page I'm gonna take you to is page number two. And this relates to our audit opinion. I'm happy to report to the county that um you were able to get an unqualified opinion on your financial statements, uh which essentially means that your financial statements are fairly and accurately presented, and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. An unqualified opinion is the best opinion that you can get for your statements. Any questions on the opinion at all, or?
I have none.
All right. Okay, so let's just jump right into the meat of this, if you guys wanna go back to page sixty one. That's the first part of our audit findings. And before I start going over the findings, I wanna just kind of explain um the format that you're seeing. So if every, when everybody's ready, I'll go.
I'm there.
We're good? All right, so.
I'm getting there.
Okay, it was page sixty one, Marv.
You've worked with me before, you know I'm a little slow, right?
People need patience with me too, so don't worry.
I'm good boss.
All right, so when you look at the format of the finding, I just wanna go over those different elements that you see there in bold. A condition of a finding is what went wrong, what what did we find that needs correction? The effect, that is essentially what we feel is the impact of of that issue going wrong. The cause is why did it happen? And the criteria, that's typically going to be some type of a law, policy, or framework that wasn't complied with or or we were in violation of. And then the recommendation part includes what we need to fix, to to get this back into compliance. And then the last thing you can see down there, where it says under Mercer County's response, it refers to a corrective action plan. Um essentially what that is, is for the county, that was prepared by Shanna, and for the Water Resource District, that was prepared by Mark. Um and it essentially addresses the finding that we had, how they plan on fixing it, and the timeframe that they wanna get that done in. And those, you can see those in this report, we we refer to it, I guess, as the cap, um is on page sixty nine for the county. And then the Water Resource District is on page seventy. And like I said, you guys might not get a chance to pass through all this stuff in this meeting, but if there are questions where you wanna call me late, at a later time too, you can always, always feel free to do that. So I'm gonna go over the first finding for the county, which is on page sixty one. Uh we titled this finding AS four hundred reporting issues. When we came into this audit, uh one of the things that we do is we take various accounting reports um to try and start to build the financial statements. And what we noticed is, depending on what report we took, it maybe didn't agree to a different report. Uh so we did some work with Shanna, um tried to do some balancing, tying the things out. Uh what we ended up finding was certain reports just didn't include entries that other reports did. And we can only speculate, I guess, as to why that is being caused. It it doesn't appear to us that it's accounting entries being entered incorrectly or anything like that. Uh what we think is happening is um those older systems like the AS four hundred, there is definitely some programming that happens behind the scenes to create those reports. And as things have changed with the county, some of that programming maybe has become outdated, um and you guys have been unable, as far as I know, to get tech support to fix those. Um another thing that we noticed in there, um the tax revenues weren't in the detailed revenue reports. So that that complicates matters, I mean, Shannon, I think, developed workarounds to be able to deal with that. Um we had to go to different ledgers to get those numbers to put into the financial statements. So we felt that it is taking extra resources of the county, and it definitely took some extra resources on the audit side to to get through the information because of that. So we are recommending to the county, I guess, to look at those issues, try to address them. Um there's, there's different avenues, I mean, maybe you can find some tech support that can fix that. Maybe you choose not to, maybe you choose to replace the system. Um the auditor's office won't get into that type of a decision, that's a management decision that the commission will make. But we feel it's an important enough issue to bring to your attention.
Okay, so just for, I'll say layman's, layman's terms, the dollars and the funds were there, it's just that the software didn't necessarily account for them in areas where it should have. It didn't carry them over into where it should have.
Yes, those detailed reports, those should all tie.
Okay.
And yeah, they didn't, and we did not find anything was missing. The other thing we do, uh just, just for your, I guess, comfort, you know, we take all the amounts that are in your financials, and we do bank confirmations with the bank. So we know that the cash that we reported in your financial statements is at the bank.
Okay, that's what I want.
Okay.
The county residents to know.
Okay. The second finding is on page sixty two. This finding is titled adjusting journal entries. So essentially this audit, uh this is a first time audit for the state auditor's office at Mercer County, and what we end up doing is we have to go back into prior auditor um documentation, that's provided by the prior auditor to get starting balances, beginning balances. And so we did that, um some of our procedures found some different things that needed to be adjusted for beginning balances, so that resulted in some prior, we call them prior period adjustments to your beginning balances. If you wanna see those, that is on in note two in your financial statements. Um it's page thirty one and thirty two, there's a a pretty good list. Then there's some other adjustments that we ended up finding as well, um related to receivables, um intergovernmental receivables, and those are things I think that the county hasn't been asked before. So we found those for the, you know, this audit, um we've worked with Shanna on that. I've provided her some tools that she's gonna be able to use, some templates for, I guess, various um amounts in the financial statements, capital assets, long-term debt, cash, receivables and payables, they're templates, we provide it to Shanna. And so going forward into the next audit, she'll have those templates, and um we'll have them prepared for the next audit, which will help ensure that some of these are gone. The other thing too, um I've I've discussed all these adjustments with Shanna directly, um answered questions, you know, if you guys look at these adjustments and have questions, you know, after this meeting, you'll have my card. Feel free to call, I'll do, I'll provide or do the best I can to explain these adjustments to you. One thing to note, um this, this is a very common um finding for audits that we do the first time. We, in the audits that we do the first time, we typically find a lot of adjustments to the statements. Any questions on that one?
No.
All right. Uh the last finding for the county um was titled lack of segregation of duties for the treasurer's account. So treasurer's accounts used to be a very, very common thing for counties. Um there's fewer and fewer counties that actually have these. But we ended up looking at the procedures surrounding the treasurer's account. Um I worked with with Darby and Don to kind of go over their process and and what they do. What we ended up finding out was the the treasurer's office essentially handled all the duties with the account. Including reconciling, access to the cash, access to writing checks. As far as auditing goes and looking at internal controls, we like to see some of those duties segregated. So what we recommended is that another county office, you know, also participate in that process to help segregate those duties. Um my understanding is I think Darby and Shanna have visited and maybe already developed some additional procedures to to segregate that that process.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
No, I would just ask Dar, I would just wanna ask Darby that is, is that, I guess, you guys have had discussion and came to a conclusion? Okay, thank you.
See, we reconcile both bank accounts, and we always turn the Union State Bank one over to the auditor's office and they, but we never, I mean, it's never been done for the um bank in North Dakota, but that's it.
Okay.
That's what we're gonna do, turn that over, and after we reconcile, then let them.
Verify.
Verify it.
Um, okay.
The bank of North Dakota is pretty easy, because that's your exchange program, check comes in and check goes out. So there, you know, there's no cash involved in the bank in North Dakota whatsoever. But yeah, Shannon and I have discussed it, that's what we're gonna do.
There, and did they, did you need a response from them? Did they respond to you and?
They, yep, they have it in their corrective action.
And you were okay with that?
Yep.
Okay?
Yep. Yeah, and I I mean, just for the commissioners' um information, the auditor's office pays particular attention to those treasurer's accounts, because we have seen instances in other counties where frauds have occurred with those accounts. So we do pay a little bit more attention to some of those control side of it. I was hoping that Travis would be here, he sent, he sits on the water board, is that correct?
Yes.
Um I I'm gonna just, I'll briefly go over the findings for the Water Resource District, just so you guys kinda know what what the situation was down there. And if there's questions, you can let me know, and you can maybe relay some information to Travis too, if he has questions. So the first finding there is finding four.
Which page is that on?
Oh, sixty four, sorry.
Come I went ahead. But this is, lack of.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, um so this is not an uncommon finding for a Water Resource District, they usually have very small staff numbers, so we usually have this finding for segregation of duties. Um in Mark's case, he's doing all the accounting functions, has access to cash, you know, everything. So so we issued this finding, I talked to Mark, he's got some different things in place that they do with the board to try and mitigate those risks. Sometimes this finding just stays, if they can't figure out how to segregate it enough. So that, that's what this finding is. And and he was, he was understanding of that. On page sixty five.
So you were okay with his resol, with his result? So you were okay with his resol, with his resolve?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Page sixty-five was titled Accuracy of Financial Reports. So every, I, I think it was every month, Mark prepares a report that the board can review, the Water Board can review. And we were looking at the different transactions in there, because we have to tie those out for the financial statements. And we identified some different checks and revenue items that were missing in the financial report. So our recommendation is here to develop some type of procedure to make sure that those annual reports or those reports agree to your underlying records. And Mark had made a comment that, I think he was kind of new to the position, so he was still learning some different things, and it, it's understandable, I, we didn't, they were missing out on those financial reports, but they were, they were in the bank statements, the activity was there. It was just missed in the reporting side of it. Third finding for the Water Resource District is on page sixty-six, and it's titled Proper Approval and Support for Expenditures. It's, it's pretty self-explanatory, I guess, we found two expenditures totaling one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars that were not approved by the board, and three expenditures totaling one thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars that didn't have support. So, in talking to Mark, the real large one there was a payment for a, a construction expenditure. It was unusually large expenditure for them, but they had some project they were doing. And what he said was, the, the board had approved the activity earlier, that they were going to do this project. So he thought when they actually paid it, that they didn't need to bring that expenditure forward to the board. And we said, no, you need to, all, all payments need to come to the board. The ones with the missing receipts, they, I, I don't, they were just missing, so. The next finding is on page sixty-seven for the Water Resource District, titled Inaccurate Bank Reconciliations. That, that large check I was talking about, that hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four fourteen, that just, that wasn't in the bank rec. So that was a material amount for the Water Resource District, so that ended up in a finding. Then the last finding for the Water Resource District is Inadequate Pledge of Assets. So one of the procedures that we do is we make sure that if entities have amounts at the bank in excess of their FDIC insurance levels, that then the bank has pledges in place to cover that. What we found for the Water Resource District is they were underpledged by fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars in two thousand and twenty, and underpledged by forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars in two thousand and nineteen. I talked to Mark about that, I don't know if he was a hundred percent aware of how that worked. So I think we got him pointed in the right direction on that, and I told him he can ask us questions if he has questions. But your Water Resource District has a lot of cash. So they've got a lot of CDs, and that kind of actually complicated the testing procedures, because we had trouble getting their CDs to balance. So we ended up, I ended up, in multiple situations, calling banks, talking to them directly to try and figure out what the CD balances were, so we'd get that cash amount right on the statements.
And that has been resolved?
I think so.
Or is it ongoing?
We talked, we talked to Mark about it, and hopefully, yes, and, and like I said, we, we also told him, please, please call us with questions if you get confused or something as you're working with it, so.
Is that reflected, again, someplace else, in like the beginning and ending balance of that, of that board, or twenty nineteen and twenty twenty?
Of the Water Board? So this, this is a note disclosure, this pledging, so that's something that's in the note, but thi, this doesn't affect the actual financial statement number, the pledging issue.
I was referring to the amount that the CDs were off, and you had to get them all balanced.
Um, it, when I say off, so yes, we had to make some adjustments to get their cash to show right on the statements.
But the ending and beginning balance, did you show in your audit report reflect the correct numbers?
Yep. That is the final finding I, that I was going to talk about. So at this point, I guess I can open it up to see if you guys have any other questions on the findings, or questions on anything else that I can do my best to, to answer.
I don't have one on the findings, I might come back to that. I see on page sixty-nine, and I've read those, and something for, like I said, our management to resolve most of those. So I'm not sure how, how that affects our question. I want to talk a little bit about the pension liability.
Okay.
We have, it went up, I think it was four million, something, and it went up to ten million, I believe, in one year. Is that correct? Pretty close?
Sounds right, there was a big jump, yes.
Uh, I can tell you guys, I think I can tell you what page that's on. Maybe not. Page five. Anyways, what is our, and then there's the, the post-employment benefit cost on that also, right? What is our obligation in case? Well, there's been a lot of discussion with the state's going to do with their pension fund, right? Can you help us, or help me, with understanding what is our concern at this point with our debt of ten million dollars?
I, I will do my best. I think we've maybe discussed this briefly before, but I think there's a, a low probability that the county would end up paying this liability. I think it's really low. I, I think the scenario that would happen is, where it could come into play, is if something happened with the, the PERS system, where it totally went under, or whatever the case might be. But these numbers are derived by actuarial assumptions. And we take those reports from the actuaries, and it put those numbers in here. That's how the numbers come about. I think the, I think the likelihood of you paying this liability next year is extremely low to nonexistent.
I would assume it would be very low in the years' time, but I was just wondering, people, let's just say that we, they closed this fund, and we had to pay retirement. I imagine, I would imagine the state would help us, because it's part of the whole state problem, you know?
Well, right, we, that's a whole nother discussion, but what happens there is, you, the, the beneficiaries would end up with not as much funding as they originally assumed they would have, is how it turns out in the end.
And I could get you somebody much better to talk about this than me, I could get you a contact from PERS or somebody to ask those questions, if, if that's something you're interested in, because they could do a way better job explaining that.
I have that contact, but I haven't reached out to them yet.
Okay.
Okay, but, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
That, that was my question regarding that.
Okay.
I got a little more pointed question.
Sure.
And/or statement. Okay. When we took bids for the audit, the, the bid from the state was approximately thirty thousand, and you came in at seventy-four. Real short, pointed question, who authorized to go above the thirty?
I don't know that there was an authorization, I think the office gave an estimate of what they thought the cost would be to do the audit, and some, I guess, unforeseen things that weren't in the estimate happened that caused the cost to increase. The cost was not expected or intended.
What would be our obligation if we refused to pay the seventy-four and we only paid the thirty?
I know the Auditor's Office would have a receivable. I think we would expect it to be paid.
Well, I'm sure they would. But if I were doing this as my own personal thing, we'd have quite an issue, and I feel I should represent the county in the same manner, and say I have problems with someone giving us a bid, and assuming that the bid is a general amount. But I would still question if you bid it at thirty and it came in at thirty-five, this came in at seventy-five. I have really big, a big issue with that. I don't know about the rest of the Commission, that's me, they can speak for thems, themselves, obviously. But I see that, when I look at the breakdown, there was ten thousand, five hundred dollars over and above, or, is that the total amount? Total amount for prior auditor work. So I don't know how I could even break that down into percentages of what, when you would actually do the work, how that would play into the original bid, you know, if, if I could say, well, originally, I'd, I mean, if I do the numbers, I would say that should have been, would have only been about three thousand, because it'd only been about a third. List of Audit Concerns. That was generated, my understanding, it was audit concerns per county commissioner? And that amounted to thirteen thousand, who authorized that?
When our office gets concerns brought to us, regardless of who brings them to us, it could be a Commissioner, it could be a citizen, we, we feel it's our duty to review those. We have to.
Does that mean that I could call you up and say, hey, I've got a problem with the Mercer County Board, and you would investigate it and charge the County Board for that deal, or is that what you're saying? Anybody can, you can say anybody can call? Well, who's the Commissioner or Commissioners?
Bill.
Did you call, or always ask your question? Can I ask that?
Uh, you can ask that, but I have to recognize you, and you'd have to ask, you'd have to say that you got a question, and we'd have to recognize you, the Chair has to recognize you.
Okay, my name is Bill Marlin, and I have a question for this gentleman, can he be recognized?
Go ahead, Bill, I'll allow the question.
Do you know, did, you're the chairman, right?
Yes.
So did he call you, or was it an individual Commissioner, or what? Shouldn't it just been approved by the board and say, hey, we got to call this guy? You know, just one person can get up and get on the phone? Can you answer?
I, I can answer, I.
Who was, who was the Commissioner?
I think the Commission, the Commission could answer that question for you, that, that really isn't important to our office as far as who.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
We got your question, Bill. Thank you.
And I don't, I don't mean any disrespect by saying that.
I understand.
Yep, but we, we do take concerns from citizens, if the citizen happens to be.
It's my concern that if I call on some jackpot, crackpot idea, and then you got it investigated, and then you're going to charge the County Board for it, that's just not right.
Yep.
I'm not saying anybody did that, I'm not accusing anybody of that, don't get me wrong, I just, when you said that, I just wanted an answer to it, that's just.
And, um, and I don't know if I'm supposed to allow Bill to talk that much or not, but my concerns are along that same, those same lines that, thank you for making me think of that. Well, it's going to be part of my, also my question, so if you have, you know, a hundred people in the county calling you, we could end up with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar bill. I have real big problems with that, that, so my, I don't know if it's a, how to even ask the question, but more so as to what would be the checks and balances to, at a point to where those, those things would have a limit, or the questions would be limited? Because, I, I mean, I'll, if I, if I call this a learning experience, I will, and in the next audit, I'll have it worded that, you know, before you respond to those questions, you need to call and authorize a dollar amount that you're going to spend on it. And if you feel it's a valid question, I, I don't know where we are, I'd have to get a state's attorney opinion, or our, um, the state give me an opinion on whether we even have the authorization to authorize it or not. Because it could, you know, and, and I know we're, I'm just almost starting to ramble here, because it could be pointed as to, well, that question has to do with the Commission themselves, and they're trying to cover up, or it's a Commissioner himself, or the Chairman himself, who doesn't want to author, allow you to investigate that? I understand that, so we would, that's why I throw in there having the state's attorney involved right away as to answering that question. But I have to agree with Bill, I mean, if you end up, if we have all these people calling, and now it's in the past, so I don't know what grounds we would have, but I have problems with that.
Okay.
That you just.
Let me explain our procedure a little bit, just so you can kind of understand how we, how we tackle these audits. The very first thing that we do in these audits is we gather some information from the county, or the client. And we gather that and put that information to what we consider to be a risk assessment document. So we have all these different things that happen at the county, we assess risks to those different items. If we do have external complaints, those are also brought into that risk assessment document. You guys are not the only county or entity that we deal with has external comments, that happens. In this case, we took those comments. We maybe didn't look at everything that came as questions, but there were definitely some things that came in that if, if those concerns were accurate, would be significant. So they were elevated to a higher risk level in our risk assessment. Those issues were discussed with the Audit Manager, with the State Auditor. And it was a, it, it's a, it's a process, it's a documented process of how those items are addressed. We didn't, we would not go in and address frivolous things. If, if there's really minor types of comments, we look at materiality, that's another thing that comes in. You know, one of, I think one of the concerns dealt with the telecommunication distribution tax. It's significant for your county. If it wasn't being done right, we, and that was a concern that was brought, we had to look, that's what we had to do. I've had this discussion with the manager, my Audit Manager, I feel bad that the bill ended to be seventy-four thousand. I've relooked at my procedures, I've relooked at the staff's procedures on what we did in this audit. We covered a lot of ground. We did. And it wasn't anticipated in the estimate. Estimates are hard, now, maybe I should have done something better to communicate those things with you. And I apologize for that if those things did not happen.
Well, I'm, I'm only glad that, and the outcome can, ended up the way it did, which is good. But, and still, it's, this is going to be a very difficult one to, for the taxpayers to even, that we're going to sit here and authorize a bill. If someone bids five thousand dollars on a tire, and it comes in at fifteen thousand, and you're just going to look at it and say, no, you bid five thousand, well, I, I'm sorry. We, we can't, we can't be doing this, our budget, we can't go three times over our entire budget.
I understand.
We, we, we're going to have trouble with this. So, see, I'm scratching my head. So, yeah, it's, it's going to be a tough one. And we'll probably get a lot of feedback from the taxpayers on this one. I, I hope not, I hope my phone doesn't ring off the hook.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have one more question, who is the Commissioner or the Commissioners?
Please be ready.
Cost that, what did you say, seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars?
Yeah. Okay. Yes, Bill. That, that, that's kind of a tough one to, to answer.
Why, why is that, sir?
I'm willing to answer it.
Pardon?
I'm willing to answer it.
Okay, go ahead, Marvin.
Sir, one thing I would ask you, the point of order, is that you be recognized, so that we have some order here? Yeah, I understand, that's, that's a small thing. I may have been the Commissioner, I'm not sure if I was the only Commissioner. My name is Marvin Schwer. I sent, prior to our audit, two years before this, concerns that I saw in our mismanagement, or what?
I see all that stuff.
Bill.
I played.
Okay. Please let me talk.
Okay.
So.
Sorry.
I sent stuff to them that our reports didn't reconcile. They just don't. And for us to make budgeting and, and, and financial decisions for the county, which report do I trust? And I can come to the board, and I can argue with the board, this report isn't accurate, yeah, that is accurate. Well, it doesn't match the AS four hundred. I don't even have a revenue report. So those are some of the questions that I asked. Now, the state, according to what Mike just said, some of my questions were maybe frivolous, and they were thrown out. But some of them are what we call in accounting as material, they affect the outcome. So, another thing, and, and I have to mention here is, I asked for some of these questions to be brought up, and a specification to be written for our audit prior to. And I never got that passed. If we had a specification prior to this audit, it would have said exactly this, this, and this, and this, and that's all we were going to look at. And if they changed, they would have to come and say, this is material, that possibly could have occurred. We gave an open bid, RFP, and it was an estimate. And they even had a clause in there that there might be some additional costs. Now, so, that's why I asked some of those questions, and some of those questions they had even prior to us approving this, because I was going down to the states, how come our reports don't match? Something's wrong, I need educated. And they would educate me. That's where those questions came from, they were all material. No, I mean, from my perspective. No, I mean, from my perspective, they were material. And they, again, they were evaluated by their professional team. If they were valid and ranked high enough on their risk assessment, they were material. They were, they were necessary. And because of that, we had a better audit. We haven't, okay, I'll just leave it at that. We have a really good foundation. We know what our beginning and ending balances are. We have to move forward with some tax and financials. We have a foundation to spring from at this point. We know what our values are. That's what I was trying to get. That's what they provided.
But were there any findings on this list of audit concerns?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think the AS four hundred was definitely one of the concerns that was brought forward to us.
But not to have, not having to do with the transfers and that? It was, the AS four hundred was because my reports don't match?
Yep.
Straight through when I have...
Yep, and there were definite...
I have all my Excel worksheets backing up everything to make everything.
And it appeared there were transfers made without board approval.
Okay. That's, that's...
Mr. Chairman, Bill Marley, I just have one question. I mean, I'm not faulting you for what you did there. I'm faulting that seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. If this gentleman is doing an audit and he's a professional, he shouldn't need anybody else just coming in and interjecting and say, check this, I'll check that. I mean, you said you've been taking this stuff to the state for a couple of years. They should have been able to find that. All I have, I don't have an issue with you, you know, calling it in. What I have an issue with is that seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. You're a professional. You should have come across all this stuff in that thirty thousand dollar bid or maybe another ten thousand dollars over that thirty thousand dollar bid without seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars because someone called. That's the thing that I can't understand is...
Okay.
There should have happened to be no phone calls or if it was, it should have been charged. I just don't understand this.
Okay.
Sounds like egos and whatever.
Okay, thank you. What I'm...
I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Bill. And then as, well, there's some other, I'm stumbling here, but that, these numbers are totals that was, reflects what was spent in each one of these areas. For instance, four thousand dollars on the AS four hundred. That's not over and above. That's how you itemized it, the total bill.
We do not typically track costs in the way that we provide them to you. We gave you that estimate of what those costs were because of the request. We typically track our costs by program. So whether it's expenditures, cash, whatever the program is. So what we provided to you there was an estimate of the cost.
What I'm, what I would like to do...
Shannon, did you send this to everybody?
Um, just to Gene. It was in regards to Gene's questions.
Yeah, I asked for it. The, um, what I'm going to do or would like to do, and the commission can overrule me, is I would like to speak with our state's attorney prior to approving this bill and have him look at it. And I do realize the outcome may not change, but I would like his opinion because this is a very large expenditure and it's way over the amount that we originally agreed to. I'll use the word agreed to. Because I guess I'm having a little bit of a issue if you were obligated, if that was a, a sealed bid type, you know, where we can hold your hands to it.
We don't do bids because what has happened to us in the past is we've done bids and something like this comes up where there's a, there's a lot of problems, there's a lot of issues. The cost does go over.
Okay, I'm going to, and I'm, but the rest of the commission can do what they want. They, this isn't my, this isn't my courtroom. But I would like to present this to our state's attorney and ask him. And I understand the outcome may, may turn out, not in my favor, but in, in the, we may have to pay the full bill anyway.
I, I would encourage you, Gene, to call Heath too. Call Heath, our audit manager. I mean, he can, he can run this down for you probably better than I can explain to you in front of the commission. But I, I would encourage you to call Heath. If you don't have his contact, I can get that for you too.
Okay, we're, any other questions of Mike?
I, I just had a couple of things. Let me make sure I understand this completely. So you gave us the, the estimate for doing and then in with that, you had that, you know, it'd be like a general audit and you do most of the general abilities that you do. So when we have somebody calling in or saying something, does that automatically push that up? Or does, does it not push that up until it's considered a concern or something that you go forward on?
It really can depend on the timing of that. I mean, if we know those things upfront before we give the estimate, yes, that would be factored into something like that. But depending on the timing and we, sometimes you can have things that come up even during the audit. You know, you might have a, an employee come up and talk to an auditor to bring up a concern. I mean, it can happen that late and it certainly isn't going to be in the estimate at that point.
Okay.
So it really depends on timing.
And is there like a certain amount that attributes to each thing? So like if it only goes to your manager and then it gets cut off at that, then that's only like fifty bucks?
Yeah, I mean, depending on what it is, I mean, some things that come to us are so easy to tell. It takes five minutes. And it really has no contribution to your bill whatsoever. And other things can take additional testing. And depending what it is, it can take significant additional testing. And it, unfortunately, just doesn't take long to add to the bill. That's the most difficult thing for me. I, I'll open up to you guys right now, just so you know this. I was a state agency auditor for twenty years. And the state agencies paid their bills. And, you know, we had our budgets just like we do here, but I never paid attention to it. Now, in the last couple of years, I've been doing political sub-audits. And this, this is where the rubber hits the road. And I, I have my own business too and I don't like, I never did like billing. This bill was hard for, for me. And it was, it was hard for Heath, our manager, too. This is not what we wanted to have happen. But we had to provide you a quality audit. If, if we cut on these things, we may have given you the wrong information. Certain issues may not have been resolved for you. I, I totally understand the frustration. I do. But I can assure you, these were hours that were spent on this project to give you a good product.
Oh, I, I don't doubt you. I, I'm not questioning the hour spent on it. I do believe that's legitimate. But I still have an issue with that and I definitely would. And I hope you understand that I want our state's attorney to look this over.
Gene, that's fair. I don't have any hard feelings about that too. That's, I get it.
And I know you're caught in the middle.
And I think I reflect with you, Gene, as well on that. It's just, my concern was, is that normally when we work as a board here, we work together as a team and we make decisions as such. And when just like one person can bring something to you without us making a decision which affects our budget, it's very concerning to me. So I think that was my biggest issue on that.
Yep, yep, understood.
Any other questions for Mike? Mike, is, is it Mike okay or is it Mike's call?
It's perfectly fine. I've been called worse.
Well, I've got a daughter. Her name's Amanda, not Mandy.
Well, again, we do also want to thank Mike and his agency. We probably didn't have a very, uh, with, the difficulty I see is probably with our four hundred. It, it just doesn't want to talk to certain things. And you guys had to go in there pretty deep in order to get that, to, basically to get that information out of there. And, but at the end of the day, we have to have the feeling at least pushed or to the taxpayers that the audit is a good audit, everything is up to par, and we all should have a good feeling about this. And it's just the, like you said, Gene, the price. I see there's a gap of communications here. Once, I mean, you're, you're overrun by that amount of money. Somebody should have brought this to the board and said, do you guys realize that this is what it's going to cost? And I think we'd all felt a lot better about that than all of a sudden here's the bill and now I got to try to figure out how to pay you guys. And so it's a little, like you said, a learning curve. And, but the next, we'll, we'll just do a better job next go around. This ain't going to happen twice. I can assure you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to personally thank Mike. It was an awesome learning experience for both my department and the Treasurers Department. We learned a lot. It was expensive, but we, we really got, we dug deep. We spent in our two departments, hundreds of hours getting things scanned and emailed and, and everything to the state auditor's office. And they, we've had a lot of meetings in between in this six months. And they have done a really good job. And I am pleased with the results, the findings. We understand them. We, we know what we need to do to fix them. But I think the end result that we can curb the idea that there's been this appropriation of funds or mismanagement of the county's money, all of that that we've heard in the media for the last couple of years. The audit report shows that Mercer County is running well and do, our offices do work well together. And we're doing, we're doing our jobs and we're doing a good job. And without the state auditor's office helping us from a prior audit to get our numbers where they need it to be and going through all of that, I, you know, to me, it was just an awesome experience. It was a long and tiring and a lot of work. But at the end of the day, I think it was a good pat on the back for both of our departments, knowing that what we're doing is right and we're doing it well. So again, I want to thank you and Heath and Josh and it's been, it has been an awesome journey with you guys. So, yeah, I don't really, Mike called after you sent the bill and he says, how are you doing? I'm like, I'm just recovering from a heart attack.
Yeah.
But that's not fun.
Yeah, it's, it is a concern. I do...
It was a very good experience.
You did do a very thorough job, in my opinion.
And I, I am very proud of our auditor's office and our Treasurers Department for getting all the paperwork tonight and then for you guys wading through it all and making sure that everything was as accurate as we needed it to be. So I do actually very much appreciate that.
A piece of information for the commission. I, I told Darby this before the meeting here, but typically when we come and do an audit for the first time, but we haven't been in there before, there's usually a lot more findings. And three findings for a first time audit by the state auditor's office is, is a, is a really low number. So...
No, I just would, you know, reiterate what most of them have said here is I'm happy with all the results, the outcome, just one part I'm not happy with. Everything else is, is fine.
I totally understand. And I know for the next audit, you, the commission decides who your auditor is. And I just want to give you just a bit of a pitch. I hope we can come back. A lot of what we did in this audit and creating, you know, new spreadsheets for all your balances, internal control write-ups, that's all done. That doesn't get done again. That updates is what happens next time. Our typical bill, just so you know, I don't know if anybody's ever explained this to you, our typical bill for a county is probably twenty-eight thousand to thirty-five thousand for a county your size. That is the typical range. And I don't know exactly what our estimate was. I think it was around thirty or thirty-two, okay, something like that. I, I think we were essentially expecting that normal thing, so...
Your normal expense typically twenty-five, thirty, is that for a one-year audit or a two-year auditor? Doesn't that make a difference?
Um, the two-year, I can take just a little bit more time because you're going through two years. So you'd probably be on the upper range just because it's two years. We don't have a lot of clients anymore that are two years. A lot of them elect to go with one year. But that's a decision that the board makes on how often that audit happens.
And with the worksheets, I think you sent what, six or eight of them? We keep those up throughout the year. It won't take us hours in our departments to be digging for that information. It'll, it'll be in there and it'll just be a quick email to Mike with, with the information in it. And I think it'll go a lot quicker.
What I...
And you've got to remember, it goes up too with a single audit. That's, that's never in the estimate. When we expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand federal fund dollars, we are required to have that single audit, so...
Shannon, I'm glad you brought that up. So that is the, that is the rule. If you do expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal funds, then you are required to have, we call it a single audit, but essentially what the single audit is, it's an audit of your federal expenditures that you spent. Yes, this audit period, you guys did exceed the seven fifty. And I would fully assume that next time you will too, just because of additional COVID money and stuff that's going to come in.
And that's already been cleared too through the federal clearinghouse or wherever. People have gotten all the emails back, so that one was good.
Yep, you guys are up to speed. Your stuff has been filed with the clearinghouse and, yeah, I mean, you're good to go. And you didn't have any findings on your federal funds. We didn't have no issues there. It was good, so...
Okay, any other questions, comments? And audiences' concerns have been noted?
Thank you.
And we'll keep them...
We'll keep in touch.
Yep.
Call Heath. I, I would definitely...
Too many words. We're going to follow that. Keep. Keep in touch, keep in mind, keep in, yes.
And, and we're open, like I said. I mean, you can call us with questions anytime. It doesn't have to be during the audit. It doesn't matter to us. We, our goal, our mission is to improve state government and improve all governments. And we don't like findings. Regardless of, you know, what your thoughts are of an auditor, we do not like findings. So if we can answer questions during the audit, the period that's going to be coming up for audit and answer those, that's what we want to do. And I think Shannon, Shannon understands that and I think Darby does too. Please call us.
I already have called him a couple of times on things that didn't even pertain to the audit, but we're like, about financials or this or that. They're very hopeful.
And we don't get charged for that at all?
Nope. No, so you really should hammer us now. Now we owe you.
Now I'm putting your name on my phone, Mike.
Okay, anything else for Mike?
I want to thank you for your time, for coming up and hearing all of our concerns and for our audit. I'm really proud that we had this audit done.
You're welcome. It was, it was an honor to, to work with Mercer County. We, we all had a good time. We have a great staff and things are great, so...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
If we back up to the bills, I would... Well, I have to ask the rest of the commission.
Remember, we held this one off, so we have to table this one until...
Yep, I have to ask them. Like I said, this is...
It was half a state's attorney.
I'm not the judge. This ain't my courtroom.
Or if we'd like to do that, we have to discuss that.
Well, just my own personal, I would, I would like to have, get a state's attorney's opinion on it, but the rest of the commission. So what, do we either get a motion to pay this bill or I get a motion to, to table this bill until we get a response from the state's attorney? I need one of the two.
Well, it, it, state's attorney, I guess it doesn't hurt to have it reviewed by him and he can, if he finds anything with it, then he can come back with that. And, but we have to make sure it gets in our next bill pile, but, you know, get it paid.
It would, I'm sure of that. Either way, I need a motion. I'm not going to make one. We either got to approve the bill or we table it.
I would make a motion that we table the bill until it comes under advisement from our state's attorney to ensure that all billing is appropriate.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I will second that.
Marvin seconded it, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Liza?
Aye.
Wayne? Oh, Marvin.
Aye.
Wayne?
I'll vote aye.
Gene will vote aye. Motion carried. This, uh, state audit bill will be tabled until we get a state's attorney opinion, which, which I'm sure will be by the next meeting.
Shannon, I have a request. I would like to receive a copy of the itemized bill that was discussed in our meeting that Gene was referring to.
You got this?
I got it. I can look at it.
I can give this one to Marvin. Okay, next on the other business, budget questions.
Chairman and fellow board members, I brought this up and let's see if I can find my information. Part of our board, part of our findings in our audit, you read page sixty-nine, was that we would get tax and financial software, hopefully have it onboard January of 2023? Is that correct?
We're going to put it in the budget next year.
We need to put it in a twenty twenty-two budget. This process of getting this software and having it onboard in January is going to take three or four months, if not a little bit longer. This isn't an automatic. There's a process to, it has to be followed to get this done. It needs to be put in our twenty twenty-two budget, not twenty twenty-three if we're going to have it onboard in January. How can we have it onboard in January if the money, we can't spend it till January? It take, it doesn't work.
Well, our people who are going to use the, they have to come to us with a recommendation first.
Well, there's another process for that, Jean. And I'll give you guys that.
And even if there were a, I can't even see it being used by January. Even if we had something right now, that's going to take a few months to get implemented.
Absolutely is. That's why it needs to be put into the twenty twenty-two budget. This here's a rough idea of what it takes to get this done.
Isn't that what you gave us, Eric?
Yes, I gave you guys a copy of that, yeah. I need to give Shannon one too. I'm not sure if she has one there or not. So this is a process that, and I've talked to other counties that have implemented this, uh, software, not any specific one. And these be put in our twenty twenty-two budget. We can't wait to, we, this was an audit finding. We agreed to the correction of this finding and we agreed that we would try to have it in place January of twenty twenty-three. It obligates us to initiate this process in twenty twenty-two.
I don't think we have to make a change to our software. I think the finding is that we need to just, um, look at.
It's not what page sixty-nine says.
That we have to, what was our findings?
Our finding reads. Mercer County Auditor, Treasurer and Tax Director will work together to find a software program, find a software program that works and meets all department needs during twenty twenty-two and hopefully to implement as soon as possible. And would like to have it running no later than January of twenty twenty-three. This was a finding of our auditor we paid, or we're going to pay good money for. We agreed to this correction.
Right, it says.
We need to follow through.
We're hopeful that, to implement as soon as possible and would like it to be running no later than twenty twenty-three. Well, they can't mandate what we do or don't do. And we need some time to have this looked into. I, I'm not.
Mr. Chairman, this has been.
I am not making a decision today to have this implemented by January of twenty twenty-three, just as of today.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we add five hundred thousand dollars to our twenty twenty-two budget to implement a tax and software program to meet the finding of implementation by January of twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a second to that motion? Do I have a second to that motion? Do I have a second to that motion? Hearing none, motion failed. And did that cover number five? Number six, portfolio updates. I, at this time, have none. Marvin?
I got a bunch this time. Okay, I met with Ken Miller and Charlie yesterday and we went over all the different money revenue possibilities or opportunities that we might have for our county roads. And it's going to take a little bit more review and study and we're working on that. So that's one of the things that we talked about. We discussed the, the cost of the bridge impacts or the impacts of the co, the bridge repairs. We talked about, uh, Cabin Site One and Two West of Pick City, the road that goes up to there and a couple of other things. One of the things that we, that was that meeting. Another thing that I want to bring up is at our last meeting, I made a half correct statement that our mill levies were going to have to be adjusted in possibly this coming election in orders so that we would have money for the twenty twenty-five. And I sent the letter down to the state and this is their answer. And it tells us that levy twelve twelve will expire at the end of twenty twenty-four. We have fifteen mills on that levy. In order to get that revenue.
It can go to fifteen mills.
We don't currently, right?
But it expires at the end of twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, Shannon, you sent us a letter. What was, what?
So is this the same email that you sent Lad? Because Lad had asked me about this, so you don't need him to respond.
I answered him back. He doesn't need to. He was taken care of.
This is what we discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, levy twelve twelve, and this is a letter from Shannon and I sent it to her in September. It was, it was passed by voter, general election in nineteen ninety-two for a maximum of fifteen mills. So we would have to go to a voter again to increase it. So what my point is that we need to do that prior to twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five because we do the budget.
Are you talking about the one that goes away or the one that we can, because that, there's the one mill where we'd have to have it approved by voters, but then after it's approved by voters, then we could actually add more mills after that correction?
Correct.
Yes, twelve twelve is going away. That limit is we're able to levy up to fifteen, that's going away. That's the only levy, seven point seven eight.
And that goes away in twenty twenty-four.
Right, twelve twelve is county road and bridge one. You always have ten mills. If you want to do the additional ten mills, you need to take it to the voters. And we have until the sixty-fourth day before the primary election, which I believe comes up to April eleventh, to get that language for our ballot for this upcoming election for the primary. And I, and with Marvin on that one, we should put it on the twenty twenty-two ballot because we don't want to wait until twenty twenty-four if it doesn't, if it doesn't pass.
Because then if it doesn't pass, what are we going to do?
We need to do it again.
Exactly.
But then that levy, that gives you the levy authority for up to twenty mills then and then the board has the third ten mills for their levy approval. So actually with the eighth to secondary road, the farm to market levy going away in twenty twenty-four, if we pass this one for county road and bridge for ten, we're actually going to be five mills ahead of where we are able to levy today.
Right, currently, okay.
Yep, and it, uh, unorganized road, we have the levy authority up to eighteen and we're at twelve point five one.
So, but the point I wanted to make is we want to be aware of this and in my opinion, I thought we should put it on this coming election. That's where I was going with this.
Yeah, we.
We plan on it.
We plan. That's the plan, yes, to allow the, get the voter. I'll just say, get the voter's permission to, um, add those other ten mills. Be allowed to add those other ten mills.
Perfect. Thank you, Shannon.
One other thing that I did is I attended this summit deal. I gave you guys all a bunch of information. Bill, if you want one of those caps, no one's volunteered for me yet, but there's some information here if anybody wants it.
Okay.
And the last I have is N D S U extension is having a livestock education workshop tomorrow from nine fifteen to twelve thirty at the Vula Civic Center. I'm done.
Okay, Liza?
Um, at the ambulance, barbealing, they talked again about, um, poor old Big Bertha is still struggling, had to go in and get fixed again, but please remember that's the one that we're going to replace. Well, and, um, they're working on the grants for that and the funding for that currently as well. The next thing they're going to be working on is their volunteer policies. And then we're also going to be working on the bylaws to make sure that they're following appropriately because they haven't been reviewed for a couple of years. We're not going to have a December meeting just because of the timing of it. So we'll meet again in January. And I just want to give a huge congratulations and shout out to Shannon for the great audit. I think you did an amazing job and I appreciate you working with Mike to make sure that we got that all through. Thank you.
That it, Liza?
Yep.
Hate to say it that way. Do you have, do you have anything else you'd like to add, Liza?
I do not, thank you, Jean.
That it, that sounds you've, okay. Wayne?
It'll be short and sweet. As you know.
You're done? Okay.
Oh, yeah. As you know, we don't have P, P and Z this coming month. We have no, so we, so we won't be meeting in December. I don't think, I'm, I'm just guessing, but I don't think the weave board will be meeting here in December neither. I think they're done with their business. So, uh, I guess, uh, I'm done.
Okay, Rob?
On P and, the note of P and Z, I haven't gotten any applications to fill that position. You guys want to strum up any interest in it in the county that would be good? Is it a particular area or it doesn't matter which area of the county, we just need someone to fill that seat? And it's an unexpired term, I believe, until just June of this year, if I got that right. Yeah, June thirtieth of twenty-two is when it's unexpired until.
Yeah, I guess I just got one little thing to add is though, and it has, as soon as Wayne mentioned planning and zoning, I've been getting a, a lot of, um, information on our wind and wind ordinance and so that's coming up. I'm going to work on the ordinance that we have. And, um, just to keep it back to the commissioner's mind, I'm one of them who's going to push that we get an order, uh, wind ordinance in place by, when is it? April first, May first?
May fifth, I think it is.
By the time that the moratorium terminates. So just, just something in, in the back of your minds, that's all it is.
And keep it in the back of your minds as well, that once any changes are made that other to the draft we currently have, it all needs state's attorney review.
Yep, yeah, and I've been in contact and communication with Lad. He has a couple, a meeting that he wants me to be involved in that's coming up. He said sometime in the afternoon here in December and then I've been working with Next Era and with Faces of Coal.
And I received a couple of emails over the weekend, um, in regards to the wind ordinance. June and I both did and Cindy, I'll forward those to you.
I was saying, because I never got that, okay.
From John Phillips and Dave Mearings.
Yeah, I really looked through that list to make sure it wasn't all the commissioners so that I could respond.
Liza should be informed of what it is about since you're sitting on that subcommittee.
Okay, yes, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
And I could sit in on that also, connect just two of us. So I'd like to know that. I'd like to be there.
Definitely.
Okay?
Yep, Lad is just supposed to let me know as soon as possible.
Thank you. Okay, being nothing else, meeting adjourned.
Does anybody want these? If not, I'll discard them. I have copies at home, so.
No, thank you.